We'll start as always with the pledge of allegiance. Please start, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll take real call now Chair Kildor.
Here.
Chair Vice Chair Heschler.
I'm here.
And Commissioner Magai.
Here.
And Chair, sorry Commissioner Newman is absent.
And now this would be the time for public communications not relating to items on the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to come up and speak? No, okay, seeing none, we'll close public communications. Are there any written communications?
No, nothing received by staff.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. Any items to pull? It looks like meeting minutes from three previous planning commission meetings. Motion to approve consent calendar.
Motion.
Second.
We are approved.
Yeah, yeah.
We will move on, okay. So now our first public hearing item is actually proposed to be continued to January 26th. Is there anything that we need to know about that?
No, just, just the recommendation is to continue. The applicant continues to work with AQMD to finalize a couple of things and hopefully they'll be ready for the next January 26th meeting.
Perfect. I have a motion to continue that item.
I'll move. I'll second.
And I will take votes. Commissioner Magai.
Aye.
Vice Chair Heschler.
Aye.
And Chair Kildor. Yes. Motion passed three zero.
Okay, so we are moving on to item three. Which is an ordinance adding a micro unit regulation, chapter fifteen dash thirteen C, to El Segundo Municipal Code Title fifteen. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, we'll go ahead and have Paul introduce that. El Segundo TV, we're going to have a presentation, so if we can have that on TV for our live viewing audience. Anyhow, this is a code amendment before you. It was something that, that we had a session about last year. The commission created a subcommittee to study the issue on micro units and provided a lot of good feedback to staff. And so we're now here before you to present that to you. So I'll turn it over to Paul.
Okay, great. Good evening Commissioners. Just a quick background on micro units. You've seen this, but just for those watching from home or for the public. Micro units are usually smaller units in the range of one hundred and fifty to four hundred square feet in size. They have amenities within the units, but also shared amenities to make the development more efficient. And as a result, they tend to be more affordable than similar developments. They're usually preferred by students, young professionals and other population groups. And they're usually permitted by cities and near transit. Micro unit ordinances contain different standards, operational standards such as onsite management, link and stay, zoning standards such as parking, height setbacks and so forth. What amenities are provided within each unit or within a development. Some standards regarding location or concentration of the units. Now, those are some of the things that we went over with the planning commission previously. We held two study sessions with the planning commission during which we presented some literature and best practices from throughout the country on micro unit regulations. We, the commission formed a subcommittee and we worked with two of the members. And we met twice to go over the literature and standards. We had the subcommittee review some draft regulations and give us some valuable feedback. And now we come before you with a draft ordinance. And I will provide a quick summary of the provisions. And we'll be happy to take questions on that at the end if you like, or you can feel free to stop me as I go. So for starters, the ordinance now sets a minimum size for units throughout the city. Minimum of two hundred and fifty square feet. For micro units, they're defined as units between two hundred and fifty and four hundred and fifty square feet in size. Micro unit developments are defined as developments with five or more micro units. The ordinance sets locations where micro unit developments would be permitted in the city. That includes the areas where we allow multiple family housing in the city. There's standards regarding sort of the unit mix, meaning that in order to avoid an undue concentration of micro units in any one location, multi-family developments will only be allowed to have a maximum of twenty-five micro units. So it will be a mix of smaller and larger units in any development. And as the commission directed us, there is a requirement for a development agreement for the more, the larger developments that are proposed. As I mentioned earlier, there are some operational standards such as requiring an onsite manager for developments of sixteen units or above. Minimum stay of thirty-one days to avoid short-term rentals. A maximum occupancy of two. In-unit amenities for these units would be, there's be some minimums for kitchen sizes and appliances, for bathroom and storage in each unit. The development standards, parking, so for one unit, for one bedroom units or studios, it would be one parking space per unit. There's bicycle, bicycle parking requirements. There's a little formatting issue there with the presentation, but there's a requirement for parking, for parking demand studies if someone wants to deviate from the parking requirements. This provision's regarding security onsite. And for those items not addressed, the underlying zoning would cover the rest of the standards. There are requirements for common onsite amenities such as private open space, which is similar to what's permitted for in other zones in the city and other developments. Common open space, outdoor space, common indoor space such as common rooms. And in this case, it would be sort of multipurpose rooms that can serve as lounges or offices or meeting areas and so forth. Requirements for washer and dryers. Some standards for the design to just kind of help those smaller units appear larger or function better, be more efficient in their design. And that is a quick summary of the ordinance contents. And we recommend that you adopt a resolution to recommend city council approval of a micro unit ordinance. We'll be happy to take your questions.
Do we have any questions for staff? Jay and I sat on this committee, so we, you know, we've exhausted a lot of our questions, so it's all you.
So the thirty-one day minimum, is that based on, anything could we make it larger or longer, I should say? Is that thirty-one days a kind of a standard?
The intent behind that is to, to avoid short-term rentals. For other multi-family residential developments, the city does not set a, a minimum number of months for rentals and leases. So we did not think to try to impose another standard there, just to avoid short-term rentals.
I was thinking that could it possibly be extended, lengthened beyond the thirty-one days?
Yes.
Beyond one month.
If the commission.
Maybe it's a three months or something.
Well, I, I, we could, I think if the commission wanted to suggest a timeframe, we can look further into it and build that suggestion into the city council recommendation. I, I think we need to look at it a little bit closer. It is consistent with our municipal code as it relates to short-term rentals. And so we'd, we need to look at how we carve that out separately from the other sections of the municipal code that specify no less than thirty days without creating an internal conflict. And then there's also state provisions or state laws that exist in the business tax profession code that stipulate the thirty-day minimum for short-term rentals and the collection of occupancy tax and so, or transit occupancy tax. And so we just need to look into it further before we extend out the date. If you wanted to make that part of the recommendation, we can include it, look at further and then advise city council on that.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be good. I think we need to get, I guess, what we think is, is the best number of days considering all the, you know, legality and business impacts of, you know, setting that. I think that the reason I bring it up is because, you know, we don't want like, you know, to me, maybe, maybe a one-month period is still kind of a transient kind of operation, which I think that we within the community probably want to generally stay away, stay away from. If we get extended to have a more, I guess, truly residential, long-term residential part of the community type of things, so.
Yeah, and then I imagine we would have to look at, right, because existing apartments probably have month-to-month leases. So how that impacts just our general multi-family code? But that might be after a period of time, like after your initial lease expiration.
Yeah.
Your whole month-to-month.
Yeah, but I, I think that there could be some, I guess, special provisions for this. If only twenty-five percent, the maximum twenty-five percent of the units can be micro units. That means they're living within kind of a rental living community and less transient. So I think that, you know, it, it doesn't just apply across the board. Like a, like an Airbnb type of thing where thirty days or less, I, I could see that. But if, you know, this is a residential structure, you know, mini-community where only twenty-five percent can be these micro units, then I think that we can pay extra consideration. So my, I think, yes, we should look or dive deeper into why we're choosing thirty-one days versus, I think, a longer period of time for the minimum.
Well, I, I think we talked about that in the, in our, in our workshop, in our committee workshop. And I think the way we got to thirty-one is knowing that these micro units are likely going to be part of a, of a bigger complex, an apartment complex or, and multifamily. And I guess we thought, why change the standards for those people if everybody else in the apartment complexes can also do a thirty-day minimum? So I guess we were just trying to keep it apples to apples for potential renters. Now, a, an apartment complex may have their own, their own terms for lease. You know, they may say, hey, you got to sign a twelve-month lease, which of course is, is fine too, but.
Yeah, no, no, I, I could see that. But, but there's also, I guess, trying to play out, like, if, if someone was renting it on a short-term basis and the landlord knew that and, you know, they, they could charge more. If you don't have, send them on your lease, you know, you charge, you're able to charge more. So with people, young professionals that are trying to get into like a micro unit to live in the community, they will be charged more if they cannot sign, sign a long-term lease. So, but, but that may or may not happen. I'm not saying that people would be, that, that's exactly how it would go, but yeah. Again, we, we should look into why we're choosing thirty-one days. And if it's possible from a legal standpoint to extend that to maybe three months, you know, and that, I mean, we're not going to require a one-year lease or anything, but two or three months would be, I think, beneficial just to look into.
Commissioner Magai, the, the reason why we selected thirty-one days was to be consistent with the rest of the municipal code, which, which regulates the thirty days for anything that would not be subject to TOT. So that's the reason why for the greater than thirty days or the thirty-one days. But we can certainly look into, there might be a broader question that you're also asking about just in general. Can we extend that beyond the traditional thirty? Which is also driven from state law, so we, we can look into it. We'll make that part of the, the recommendation or the commission can make that part of the recommendation to city council. And then we can advise council on the outcome of that.
Are there any other questions from staff? Because then we will ultimately open it up to a public hearing and then we can still discuss that as a commission.
I, I have no questions.
I, I had one wording question on page five of the ordinance. I think it's thirty-five in the package. On, what is it, fifteen thirteen C dash five, the development agreement required, that last line. The foregoing notwithstanding, no development may not exceed a maximum of seventy-five percent micro units. I think it's just a wording thing, but I wasn't sure what that meant.
Are you asking about the number seventy-five percent?
Well, in the way that it's.
Yes, there is, that not should be stricken, so.
Okay, may not exceed seventy-five percent.
No, no development may exceed.
May exceed, got it, okay. That was my only, that's the only other thing I had.
Thank you.
May there are questions for staff? I'll see if there's any public comments on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on micro units? Nope, seeing none, we can close the public comment period. And it sounds like have a discussion on whether we want to recommend extending that period of time.
Well, I, I guess, I don't even want to be that strong in my comments to recommend extending it, but it's explore the ability to and, and, and why we ended up on that instead of something longer. I'm, I'm not, you know, you know, to say that we, we should, we should definitively extend it. There's the legality and that's not what people want, but we should explore the, I guess, the potential to extending that.
If any.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with, with thirty days. I mean, different people have different life situations and, you know, people, I, I could even imagine someone coming to, a highly-paid executive coming to Raytheon and needing something for thirty days while he's, while he's traveling, he or she is traveling and, you know, it's a, it's just a nice temporary home situation for thirty days. But, yeah, I don't, I, I can't begin to think about people that might, where thirty, where sixty days or ninety days may not fit what they need in their life right now and yet we're still trying to create housing options for people, even if it's short-term.
Right, so I guess maybe in that mind, is that the question that you're asking? Like, are we creating corporate housing or VRBO instead of really addressing a housing issue?
Yes, in a nutshell. Yes, I think that's, you know, how, how will people use this, I guess, ability to have a very short, small, short, short, small area, short-term rental? To kind of flip what you said, Jay, like, for if someone was living there in, in the seventy-five percent, you know, that they have like, you know, long-term leases and stuff and they see high turnover in some of the units. Does that make them, you know, less likely to, to want to stay there? If there's like a high turnover and, you know, who knows? It may be some Raytheon employees, it may be, you know, people that are, you know, that, that they don't want to live here. I don't know, I don't know. Yeah, so, so yeah, and, you know, I, I understand that you guys went over this in the, in the, in the subcommittee. So it's not something that I feel, you know, very, very strongly about, but I mean, I just wanted to bring it up because that caught my, my eye.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any issue with staff researching it, exploring it and just making sure that we're not in conflict with any other existing code. Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, do we want to then, do we want to make motion approving, adopting resolution twenty-nine, twenty-eight with the additional caveat of exploring the term?
Yeah, I, I'll move. Well, second, it's your.
With that motion, I just want to, there should be a typographical correction as well. We, we do include, include the minimum length of stay shall be thirty days. In addition to exploring this, I just want to make, it should say shall be thirty-one days to be consistent with the code today. But that doesn't change your motion, I just will, will correct the typographical error.
Great.
Thank you.
And I also just want to say, Paul, you and the team did a great job. I mean, the, the whole purpose of doing this, this amendment is there was no precedent for, for tiny houses. I'm sorry, for, for, for these small micro units, teeny, teeny tiny houses. So you took a kind of complicated subject and I think you found some nice clarity in it. So thank you for, for, for trying to sift through that and figure that out.
Thank you.
Agreed. So we will take a vote?
Yeah, I'll take votes. Commissioner Magai.
Aye.
Vice Chair Heschler.
Aye.
And Chair Kildor.
Aye.
And motion passes three oh.
Great, so we are moving on to new business, item four. Smoky Hall specific plan update, study session. I believe this is a presentation from a consultant or from staff.
It'll be more from our consultant, but what I wanted to do before I hand it off to Paul. As, as you know, we've had the Smoky Hall specific plan in place for several years now. I think we, we've come to the point where we're trying to, you know, study, you know, you know, how effective it's been and what needs to be tweaked around, if you will. And so we've identified a few things and, and we've also heard from, from, from the commission on, on other topics that we should also be exploring. The, the presentation is kind of set up in a way kind of similar to what we did with downtown specific plan. So we'll kind of introduce a couple topical issues and then kind of break for, for some Q and A. But it differs from the downtown specific plan in that the downtown specific plan, as you know, it's, it's being revamped and reworked and, and it's being massaged to, to, to create its own, you know, specific plan again. Whereas this one is different in that it's an existing plan. We're not, we're not doing a complete overhaul. We're kind of, like I said, at the point, at the point where, you know, trying to explore, you know, how to make it a little bit better, see what's worked and, and perhaps change a few things and, and get some direction from you. So we'd appreciate, you know, just, you know, some true dialogue like we, like we did with downtown specific plan. And, and, you know, there's no right or wrong, we just, you know, want to truly get that dialogue going with, with you all, so. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Paul and our consultant.
I'm just going to introduce Laura Stetson from MIG, which is the company that assisted the city with drafting the specific plan itself originally. So it's great to have them back to help us with this effort. With that, go ahead, Laura.
Thanks, Paul, thanks Eduardo, Madam Chair, congratulations on your chairmanship. And thank you for inviting us back or to, to help the city with the specific plan. I wasn't intimately involved in, in preparing the specific plan five or six years ago, but I am always delighted to come to your charming little city. I, I love El Segundo, so it's fun, fun to be back. We've got a presentation that as indicated, we'll pause after we've hit on some major topics so we can have discussion because we have, I won't say a lot to cover tonight, there's some easy stuff and some things that aren't so hard. We'll have recommendations at the end that might say, do you want to take care of the easy stuff now? Do you want to take care of easy and hard or just easy and, and pump some of the hard stuff to more discussion later on? So that's the structure this evening. I've noticed a typo on our slide, we are actually in twenty twenty-three, believe it or not.
And. Is that not working? I'll advance for you, it looks like it's not working, sorry.
Yeah, hold on, I'll just see if I can get it going here, it is not working, I don't, not sure where I'm pointing.
Yeah.
So, sure, go ahead, next slide, Paul, please.
I think it's kind of freezing up on me here, give me a second.
So it wasn't me, huh?
Let me just try to open it up again.
Yeah, you were able to get, advance through it before.
Sorry about that. Alrighty.
While he's doing that, I'll tell you about some of the, the highlights that we're looking for in terms of big picture.
Yeah.
Okay. Next slide. Introduction of the project team, I wanted to thank all of your staff for working so hard on this and my cohort Roxanne Borzubertrand, who is at home this evening, but she, you might see her at the city council meetings. Next slide. We mentioned that we do want to explore some of these minor amendments or things that we've called vexing staff over the last couple of years. And if we can fix those minor vexing things this evening, that would be great. We also want to talk about how staff has been using the design guidelines that are in the specific plan. They're actually now shoulds, if you will. It would be nice if this would be part of the project. And the thought is maybe some of those, just to keep the design quality high at all times, is to turn some of those shoulds into shalls and not make them part of a negotiation process and part of a process that's actually tied to the community benefit program that we also want to talk about. We want to talk about El Segundo Boulevard and what the plan shows as the ultimate plan for El Segundo. Talk about some alternatives because the pilot project was not greeted with overwhelming open arms a couple of years ago when it went through, so we wanted to revisit that. We do want to talk a little bit about the community benefits program. And then the big question of whether or not housing beyond caretaker units should be allowed within the specific plan area. You've just been through a lot of discussion in your housing element. So you, you probably know all the background of all the housing that El Segundo is, is committing to provide capacity for over the next eight years. Next slide. Next slide. The specific plan. Next slide. The specific plan originally was adopted back in nineteen eighty-six, but there was an overhaul that resulted in an adoption of, in twenty-eighteen of a very different specific plan. It continued to celebrate the, the funkiness and the wonderfulness of the Smoky Hollow District, but, uh, called for some improvements to the public realm, to the streets, to parking, to things that would really start to catalyze development and make the, the, uh, area really function better. In March of this year, the, uh, city did approve an amendment that allowed for some height increases at the east end of the specific plan towards Pacific Coast Highway. Next. There are four overarching principles that guide specific plan development, um, one of which is, the third one there, preserve, preserve the mid-century industrial feel. And that's something to think about as we come up to the housing discussion, is that consistent with what was one of these original guiding principles as part of the plan? Next slide. Couple more guiding principles here, um, and the, the city is really moving forward and ensuring that these do, uh, uh, inform all development proposals that are coming through. Particularly that last one, Paul, if you could go back for that to a second, it's the, the flexibility, the creativity, the innovation, you are really getting a lot more different businesses in here than the tire shops that were in the Quanza Huts, um, for, for many, many years, so, yes.
And, and Laura, to, to clarify, these guiding principles were from the twenty-eighteen plan, right?
Correct, they are, they are currently in effect in this, for this plan. Next slide. A number of projects have been realized consistent with what is stated in the specific plan and you can see some of those major projects there, um, that have been approved, several of them, and we'll talk about a few of them in a minute, that, um, took advantage of the community benefits program that's in the specific plan. There have been some city pilot projects, uh, foremost, the, um, adding parking, temporary parking along El Segundo Boulevard, we'll come back to that in a little bit here. Next slide. There is also a pilot project that will be implemented by the, um, end of this year to install, um, parking, angled parking and one-way streets, and that would be on Nevada, Oregon and California to, and this is called for in the specific plan, but before you start making capital improvements, it's always nice to test it with paint on the ground and other things that, uh, let people test it, see if it works. Next one. And this is just another indication of what would be, in addition to the one-way streets, is to start to provide some additional parking space with angled parking. If you drive on Franklin, for example, for right now, it's, um, parallel, not par, yeah, uh, what's the word? Parallel parking, I guess, to the curb, and you can squeeze in a lot more if you do angled parking, but you've got limited right-of-way, so you need to go ahead and put the angled parking in. Next slide. As I mentioned, there was the specific plan amendment that did increase height at the east end of the planning area. And the proposed amendments, um, I guess, uh, Paul, let me back up for a sec, I, um, no, let's go ahead and move forward with the, with the proposed amendments. Next slide. There are three categories that we want to talk about this evening, it's reacting to some emerging land use trends and some requests that staff has had, clearing up unclear provisions of the code and then making these substantive amendments. So let's go to the next slide and highlight the, the, uh, emerging land use trends that staff would like to react to. There have been quite a few requests for gyms, small gyms, um, personal training or, or gyms that may be of more substantial size, and so the thought is, first, the question is, is that's a use that should be considered within the specific plan area. Uh, something that we proposed to staff is maybe you look at it at a two-tier, maybe the small gyms are okay by right, but if there's something that's going to have more impact in terms of hours of operation and parking, that maybe that's a conditional use permit, and I've seen the threshold usually at about twenty-five hundred square feet for a gym to go from by right to a, a use permit. Restaurants, to put a restaurant in Smoky Hollow requires a conditional use permit, and you probably know that that takes more time, um, cost to a, to a applicant and uncertainty, they don't know whether or not their permit is going to be permitted. And so the intent originally was to really focus that type of use in downtown, on Main Street, and not so much in the Smoky Hollow area, and so as part of the city's, if you will, economic development initiatives that continue to have a CUP in the Smoky Hollow area. And for anything that does, um, where, where restaurants are allowed, currently the outdoor dining regulations, uh, the parking regulations for outdoor dining are different for Smoky Hollow than they are for the rest of the city, and we thought, well, that's kind of weird, uh, why don't, why don't we just make it all consistent across the board? And I think that was probably just an oversight five or six years ago when, when it was done. There have been requests for tutoring uses, the question is, is that something that, um, is appropriate to have? And I, this came up largely because of the pandemic and folks, kids, kids were not going to school, they were working, uh, doing their schoolwork at home and I could just see the parents going, no, we need some place to send them to do their schoolwork. And so those types of questions came up, is could we establish tutoring sitter, part-time classrooms within the area? And then are there any additional uses that you as commissioners and, and members of this community, um, have heard about that might be interesting in the Smoky Hollow area? And, and, um, housing is a completely different discussion, this is, are there businesses that would work in this, um, area that are not allowed today or have rigorous requirements? Next slide. Unclear provisions that are in the plan, and these, these are kind of planning wonky, if you will, so, uh, there, there are things that just need to be cleaned up so they work a little bit better for staff. Next slide. The first is caretaker units, actually, this isn't such a planning wonky issue, um, there have been caretaker units that have been requested that kind of evolve to more that, more live-work, so it's not somebody who's making sure that the business is safe at night, but, uh, it, they want to live near their business or somebody puts it in and rinses it out. The term change of occupancy, what does that mean? The building department thinks that any time a new business comes in, that that is a change of occupancy or even a new tenant with an existing business being there, and does that trigger the need to bring un, uh, non-conforming parking up to code, which makes it tough to have a business turnover if they've got to meet the new parking requirement? So it's, that's just a cleanup that we need to take care of, so the building department isn't confused by that term. Uh, we wanted to, uh, strengthen the whole purpose statement of why certain uses are allowed and why not, to really set the stage of what the purpose of the Smoky Hollow, um, specific plan is. And then there is a provision in the code that if a use comes in for a proposed use and it's not listed as a use that's allowed either by use permit or, or by right, um, how does that determination be made as to, is it consistent or is it resemble something else? And so we wanted to put language in there that puts the burden fully on Michael to make a decision as to whether or not it is a kind of like-it use, he always has the ability to refer that up to the planning commission if, if there's some questions there.
Can I, has that, do we have examples of that happening?
You know, actually, uh, no, I think the best example is pretty, pretty much the, the impetus of this, which is the question about the fitness facilities. I think, um, the question came to me about a year ago related to fitness uses, um, which could have been an opportunity to make a determination, but we just didn't have the latitude in the current document to do so, and that started this conversation internally about starting this process.
So, so you denied, you denied that, um, that gym at the time?
I didn't deny anything, um, they just didn't make the formal ask, uh, but, once we explained what the process was, uh, and so they found another home at the time, um, but there was no formal application at the time.
And, and Michael and Eduardo and, uh, Paul, was the tutoring issue one that came up in this regard? And so it's not specifically allowed in the specific plan today?
Yeah, it's not listed as a permitted use, yeah.
Yeah, it's allowed through an interpretation, that you sought.
Next slide, please. Discussion. It, any questions or suggestions about what was presented, so caretaker units, um, gyms, tutoring, any other things that you think need to be addressed from a land use perspective?
Go ahead.
No, please.
Uh, just kind of taking these in pieces, the, the, the question of describing what a business is, tutoring, gym, things like that, um, the incubator business was one of the things on there, you know, at what point, you know, there's jillions of types of businesses, of course, and so at what point does every single use have to be listed, you know, and you're starting to parse out details, um, because, you know, tutoring, I, I guess tutoring requires having kids come to a place, but, you know, is that any different than a hair salon or something like that, that, in, in, uh, just kind of thinking about how a business operates? And so, um, what's the right kind of language that gives staff a, a good latitude and frankly encourages, um, encourages new tenants and new, new business owners to come in?
And, and that's why we felt that revising the intent and purpose statement to clearly indicate what the vision is, that there, you've got the eight guiding principles, but if you can clearly say, this is what this district is intended for, it makes it easier for the, CD Director to make that interpretation.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's, it's less about defining the exact use and more about defining the components of it and how it ties to, to that vision, that, which will enable us to utilize a tool moving forward regardless of maybe tutoring is no longer a thing, but maybe axe-throwing with small groups of kids is a thing and, you know, deciding whether small groups of kids coming, you know, if that meets the vision, the same as the, the intent and purpose of, of the tutoring center concept.
So it's more about, does a particular business fit the spirit of the, the vision? Is that kind of?
Yeah.
The, the parameter, the, the lens?
That, that's a great way of describing it.
Okay.
The parking, it's only the outdoor dining portion of parking that varies? Or do we have different parking standards for restaurants in general between Smoky Hollow and the Downtown Specific Plan?
I would say yes, because, uh, and correct the guys if I misspeaking, because we've got a, a, it's one standard for Smoky Hollow for any use.
There's, there's one standard for all the, uh, uses in Smoky Hollow, the exception is the outdoor dining that has a separate rate, and it's based on the number of seats versus the square footage of the outdoor dining area, which is common in the rest of the code.
Okay, so it's making that consist, making that.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Yeah.
It wasn't one of your exact questions, but the, the, um, the topic of testing parking and one-way streets and things like that, I, I'd, I'd love to say that, um, the test that was done on El Segundo Boulevard, uh, you know, it was, it was, it was a good try, but I feel like it was a swing and a miss. Um, you know, when you look at those renderings of what El Segundo Boulevard could have been with parallel parking and these little bumpouts that would, that would, uh, facilitate turns and frankly beautify the street, you look at those renderings, but of course the test that was done could never really replicate that. And so instead those white cones were set up, which were kind of nasty looking, really, and I don't think, I think most people had no idea what it was. And so, um, I, I guess, going forward, thinking about Nevada, Oregon and California streets, when we think about moving those to angled parking and one-way streets, if there's a better way to do the test, a better way to do the mock-up, I guess, and, uh, you don't have to answer that now, but I just want to go on record saying that if you do a test, it's got to be, it, it's got to feel like what it's going to be when it's finished, otherwise it's, it's very likely to fail.
Yeah, the, the execution could be the cause for the failure rather than.
Precisely, that was a much better way to say.
Yeah, and, and so that, the, the one-way streets and the angled parking is, is in development, it'll precede this process, and so Paul and Eduardo and I will need to coordinate to just talk to Public Works and make sure that the execution doesn't kill the idea.
Right, right.
I think the biggest part of that is communicating it out, I think I came on the commission right once this plan was kind of formalized and I did not know that that was a pilot program and I got asked all the time what was going on with those horrific white, and so just telling people what's happening in advance, even more than they're asking for it, because that will stave off most of the upset, I think.
Truly, truly noted.
Yeah, and angled parking is going to be a lot easier to mock-up, no question about it, because, you know, as you said, it's, it's stripes on the ground, it's paint, um, but, you know, if there's bumpouts, if there's landscaping intent, um, you know, I think the bigger issue is how do we keep striving towards these complete streets that were, that were the plan originally in, in Smoky Hollow, you know, these, these well-designed, multi-use, pedestrian-friendly thoroughfares, which really is what would make Smoky Hollow phenomenal. And so everything that we can do as a city to keep marching in that direction, I think, is probably one of the things that I'm most interested in this Downtown Speci, or I'm sorry, the Smoky Hollow Specific Plan.
Keep that thought when we get to community benefits.
We will have some more slides on, uh, the public realm improvements and, and El Segundo Boulevard, too.
Okay.
Uh, but on the, uh, uses, uh, topic, did you have any other, uh, thoughts on these?
Well, I, I just want to say a yes to all, I think that gyms, I think having a limit in terms of the size of the gym, you know, would, would be good, but, I mean, there, there are gyms there now or there has, has been historically, and I think that they're, they're good to have. I think in restaurants, we should, you know, make it easy for restaurants to get in there, whether it be, you know, revising the, the permit process, uh, or, or not to do that, um, and tutoring is kind of an odd one to me, it's kind of like, okay, sure, but I think that incubators should actually be encouraged to be there because that's the intent of Smoky Hollow, right, to get kind of these cutting-edge kind of, um, businesses there so they can grow, so I think not just include them, but encourage them. But I think overall, you know, businesses that have high foot traffic should be one of the priorities, if we can somehow prioritize that in, in, in the land use, uh, I guess, se, section of the, the plan, like, well, what types of businesses do we want to draw here? I think that that should be near the top of the priority list.
Guys, want to talk caretaker units at all, or is that maybe further down the line when we talk about more residential versus?
Is there a housing-specific section that's coming up?
Okay.
I will save it.
Yeah.
We can, we can discuss caretaker units as they are in the specific plan today, in other words, if we need to clarify existing provisions about caretaker units, but then we can also have a larger, we can have a larger discussion. Um, I don't believe we have any permitted caretaker units in Smoky Hollow currently.
Gotcha.
All right, moving on to the next topic. Substantive amendments, we've got, as I've indicated, three substantive amendments, and we'll start with El Segundo Boulevard. This was the pilot project that was tested. The diagram up at the top, um, as, uh, Kuscher Heschler indicated, is quite beautiful and, and indicates that there will be some nice improvements or would be if it moves forward, including reducing the number of lanes, allowing parking on the street, on the, uh, south side of the street, and the, um, middle diagram at the bottom there indicated what was tested, and that would be, this is, would be kind of a phased approach to put that parking lane in, but then over time also widen the sidewalk, it's, I, what, four feet or so right now? And it could be widened to eight feet, you've got right-of-way to play with on the north side, it's like five to six feet of right-of-way that would allow everything to, to shift over wider sidewalks, create the parking lane, this was part of what was tested and removed, I guess, because there were ugly white ballards and people were confused, but there are probably other reasons as well. Before getting to this point in the specific plan process, there were a couple of other ideas that were tested, and this is on the next couple of slides here, um, next slide. The first option is keep it as it is, why fiddle with, with El Segundo Boulevard if everybody likes it and it seems to work? Um, of course, you could always beautify it if you wanted to, but the, the, you know, keep it as it is means work within the existing rights of way that you have there today. The second option would be to create a bike lane on either side of the Boulevard and it, you would have a sidewalk, parking lane, bike lane, is the way this is indicated, on the, um, the north side of the roadway, and there would be one lane in each direction and then a middle left turn lane, so you would be going down from four to three lanes and essentially one right lane eastbound and one lane westbound is what this option proposed. And wider sidewalks, again, on the, on the north side to create that pedestrian environment, eight feet, so, you know, that's a good-sized sidewalk. The third option would be to, um, have the bike, uh, biking on the, entirely on the south side through a dedicated cycle track and, which would be protected from the, the cars, uh, still parking on the north side, wider sidewalk, I think this one just shows seven feet if you can read that far, but, um, one lane each direction and again the, the left turn lane, so there could be other permutations, these were the three that were, uh, or the four that were actually discussed during the, uh, development of the specific plan that was adopted in, in twenty-eighteen. So we'll, we'll pause here for discussion and comments on El Segundo Boulevard.
Can you keep those sections up while we do that?
And if you want to flick back and forth, just let us know.
Yeah, whichever one you'd like to see, let, let me know and I can.
I don't, I have a lot of thoughts, but I don't know how to articulate it, I feel like our, uh, biking enthusiasts and our transportation expert are probably better served to, to do that, yes, to the widened sidewalk, for sure. I've tried. I've tried to drop off my car, walk down El Segundo Boulevard and I feel like you're taking your life in your own hands when you do that. So, yeah, I.
Exactly. Yeah, cause yeah, I've, I've used the, the pit stop many times and you try to walk along the street, it's just not feel safe. So that's kind of my first question is, well, which configuration will allow for a bike lane? Lower, I guess, speeds on that street and what, what is the safest for the, the bikers slash pedestrians? Well, which configuration? Is it having the bike lanes on both sides or on just one side? Are there studies on that? Do people know?
Um, I'm not qualified to answer that question. I'm not a traffic engineer, so we could take that out of advisement and bring it, um, back. And I don't know if you guys have had those discussions. Did you have those discussions previously?
Well, uh, what you brought up is, uh, some, uh, very useful principles to work with, you know? Make sure you create a safe environment for pedestrians, but also try to make space for cyclists.
Yeah.
So we can use that as a guide to kind of work off of.
Yeah, I think we want to, especially down that street, I think we need to encourage, um, more micro, micro mobility. If we want, uh, Smokey Hollow to be used more to make it kind of this pedestrian type of thing. If, if the main street there, you know, you don't feel safe walking on, then people aren't going to walk around generally between the streets then, right? So it's, yeah, I think safety should be number one. I think that it, it's kind of a weird street to me because all the other streets like, you know, Maple and Grand, people generally have to go slow. I feel like people go down this way in, in this 35 mile an hour zone, but people go to like 55, 60 miles down that street. If we, there's ways that, you know, uh, I guess speed mitigation kind of efforts to, to get people slowed down so that's more of a usable street to the Smokey Hollow. People, people that go to Smokey Hollow, that, that would be beneficial.
You're right, Kevin. I mean, it's, uh, wider streets, encourage faster speeds. And, uh, you know, I'm guilty of it too. I've, you know, I'll regularly drive 45 or 50 and the little light flashes. And it's like, ah, shouldn't be doing this. And then, you know, inevitably there's somebody riding their bike on that road. And it's, uh, it's kind of terrifying. The, the buildings have zero setback from the sidewalks. So these, the four-foot sidewalk seems even narrower because there's a wall right next to you. And so I agree pedestrian safety is the, the first thing that needs to, to be fixed. Going to an eight-foot sidewalk would be fantastic. You know, in particular, as we talk about encouraging other business uses down here, you know, everything that this plan is going to do is going to encourage more activity and more businesses and more people. And so that pedestrian-friendly environment is, is critical. I'd love to see a, uh, a, a dedicated single-track, um, bike, bike track. I don't know that there's room for that. The one you described was two-way on one side of the street, I think. You know, the, the dedicated bike track in, in Redondo in King Harbor is a home run, you know? And people roller skated and, you know, their kids are on bikes there and it's, it's, it's a much safer environment. I think the question is how much room is there for any of these things? You know, if COVID taught us anything, when we shut down lanes on Main Street, if we tried to do that pre-COVID, people, there, people would be out there with pitchforks, you know, flaming pitchforks. Cause well, how could you take a lane away from Main Street? Well, suddenly when, when putting dining in one of the lanes was a solution and everybody loved it's like, hey, you know what, maybe you don't need four lanes of traffic on Main Street. And you know, it's, it's, it might take you another three seconds at a stop sign while there's more cars there, but really it probably, I don't think it took hours away from anybody's life. So going to a three-lane solution on El Segundo would absolutely calm traffic.
Yeah.
I mean, it would do the, the intended thing that you're describing. And then when you start adding landscaping and bump outs and bike lanes, all those things help calm traffic. So that would be a good way to do that. There's going to be a lot of people that would not be okay with it because they want to go 50 miles an hour.
Well, when I think about the traffic too, I think of, I mean, it's the only really street roadway in El Segundo that has major truck traffic. So how, what, how much does Chevron weigh in or whoever's using that right away? I mean, you've got some semis that feel like they're booking it down there. So is that consistent with us wanting this pedestrian cycling? And I, I'm not a traffic engineer by any means either, so I don't know how much that's actually, do we need it to stay that way for business function in the city?
Do, do we, is that a designated truck route? Because they have the entrance on, um, yeah, on P C, on P C H right across from Topgolf. I mean, do they have to go down that street or?
Yeah, the, yeah, it is a truck route and they, they. Yeah, have tons of trucks going down there in that direction. Yeah, I don't know if trucks can come off of, uh, Sepulveda or P C H and make it all the way down to the west side of the refinery. So it, they, it's definitely a need. And to answer your question, uh, Sherkeloff, yes, in order to make changes to the street configuration, we would have to take that into account and study truck traffic, timing and so forth.
So when we did the parking study and it was removed, does that mean that that parking configuration is now off the table? Or is that?
No, it does not. It just means that that pilot was ended. And, uh, the, the plan still calls for a parking lane there. So let's say we're at a pause. If there is perhaps a different way to approach it, like you suggested at the beginning of this, the discussion, maybe that's the solution or the, the direction we get here tonight. That, you know, let's try another pilot and let's do it better or, or consider an alternative.
Right.
One thing that's not included in this, is there any conversation about lighting on El Segundo Boulevard? Am I the only one who feels like it's so dark that that's what makes it dangerous to? And I have a teenager who sometimes they say that they want to bike to McDonald's and that makes me all kinds of nervous, so. But it doesn't feel very well lit and I don't know how that would be incorporated into any sort of plans.
I think this is kind of related to that safety issue that you brought up earlier, related to pedestrians, but expanded to cyclists as well.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. And, um, you know, as we, when we go to the next section talking about complete streets, or is this that section that we're talking about that?
This is it, Matt.
Okay, I mean, uh, a complete street means, um, inviting for everyone, for all users. So lighting has to be part of that, you know, all times of day and night. And again, if we're trying to attract businesses and make this, look, by the way, Smokey Hollow may be the coolest piece of property in the South Bay. You know, the, the, the opportunity for what it will become, there's nowhere else in, in any city, any beach city that I know of that has this potential. So doing it right is really important.
I agree.
So we've, we've got four principles for El Segundo, wider sidewalks slash pedestrian safety, space for cyclists, speed mitigation and lighting, which relates to safety for everybody. Okay. I guess we'll need to talk internally what that means of, does it mean keep this as the ultimate configuration? Or create maybe amend the specific plan to say, here are two things that could happen to El Segundo Boulevard? And, and, and pick options and, and over time the, the city could choose which one to pursue.
Yeah, I, I, the bike lane is probably the most significant thing that would create havoc on, on how you pinch this thing down. The, I, I just looked up the, uh, the South Bay Bicycle Master Plan that was approved by the city, you know, 10 years ago. And, and this, El Segundo Boulevard is definitely on the plan as a bike route. I think it said as a class-two bike route. Again, that was 10 years ago. And so, um, having an alternative to El Segundo Boulevard, Boulevard as a bike route would be critical. If we decided we didn't want to do a bike lane there and we wanted to divert bike traffic over to Franklin, for example, you know, then that, then that's a consideration also and, and, you know, signage, letting people know where to go. And frankly, Franklin would have to be improved a little bit also for, for a, a bike-friendly street. So I think it's a big question of what do you do with the bike lane? Where does it go? How do you encourage, um, non-motorized transportation in this town? And bike lanes are ways to do that. Sorry, I'm talking a lot, but there's another aspect of this is the, the plan that is approved on El Segundo Bou- Boulevard closer to Nash, the old Raytheon property. There's a class, a, a, a cycle track there, which really goes nowhere. It's, you know, it was installed as part of, of, part of those entitlements. But, uh, I think the plan all along was eventually to link that all the way to the train station and then all the way to the beach or at least to, to Main Street as well. So I think that's a real consideration is, is how to, how to continue that experience.
Yeah, I, I think that the idea of having both bike lanes on the south side of the street is kind of, kind of wacky to me because they, there, there's nothing on that side and it's, it's, it's dangerous to like, oh, I want to go like to a coffee shop. I'm going to cut across El Segundo Boulevard where there's no lights or anything. I think if, if you did put both, um, bike lanes on one side, it should be the north side. They can like stop and get stuff and things like that and kind of concentrate all the, the, the micro mobility and pedestrian side to the north side of the street and keep them away from the, 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 the south side.
I agree 100%. Absolutely.
I'm writing down that it sounds, it, it seems wacky. That's great input, but that's exactly what the type of input that we need on that. Paul, if we could go to the next slide or next topic, I guess, jump ahead to community benefits. Bear with me a moment and I don't expect you to read these slides. It's, the, these are directly from the specific plan. But the way the specific plan is set up is there's a set of development standards. And I can't recite them all to you, but it indicates heights, setbacks. The critical one is floor area ratio, which is how much square footage can you get on a lot, depending on what the lot size is? And there are provisions in the specific plan that says if you developer offers something extra to the city, you can increase your floor area ratio, your FAR. And there are two tiers, tier one and, and you get to go up depending on how much you, you give back. This community benefits plan was not, the, the flesh and bones of it were, or the, the bones of it were there. Staff has done a great job in putting the flesh on and how does it work? And so these are the, this indicates what you can do, how much you can increase if you do certain things without being very specific. So Paul, if we could go to the next slide. Staff has put together a community benefits checklist program and, uh, you're nodding your head. It looks like you're very familiar with it.
Yeah, we remember when it was put together.
Yeah, it's, it's, frankly, it's brilliant. The way it's put together in terms of assigning dollar values and there's a requirement that there be a, I don't want to call it a pro forma, but that, that the, um, it, a third party under contract to the city assesses what the value is being given to the developer for that additional square footage or whatever, mostly square footage they're getting. Therefore, what would be the value of the benefits that they're giving back to the city? Now, the way most or many community benefits programs are, um, set up is they focus on truly public benefits. Crosswalks, parks, childcare centers, things that everybody can use. The way the specific plan was set up and the way it's implemented through the community benefits program, are there are things that are restricted to the site? Things like quote, superior design quality. You know, you, you look at the design guidelines and you say, if you do these, you can get additional floor area ratio. There are projects that have brought forward, uh, public benches that people can sit on out in front of the building. Maybe art that's part of, but you have a, you have a public art program in the city, right? So it, it would have to be additive to, to what the, the public art program requires. And so we were having discussions with the city as maybe you reconfigure the community benefits program a little bit more to lean it toward true community benefits. And that could even include fees that are paid into a fund to put traffic lights in or to create decorative sidewalks or decorative crosswalks. And so the money would accumulate or the developer, um, depending on what their, their, the analysis of the economist shows, would give that amount of money, um, to make up for the, the benefit that they've received. And so the thought was, well, maybe there are things in the design guidelines that could actually become standards. So it's, you know, not part of the community benefits program, it's setting the design bar higher. Saying this is what we're expecting of everybody for a project that comes in. And the community benefits would therefore be weighted more toward the public benefits that, that would, uh, result from the project. And, uh, let's go to the next slide, uh, see what we've got there. Before we, so hold those thoughts, you want to, for, as for some examples of how community benefits has worked to date. The, the tier two, which is the higher, um, this, this project increased the height by 15 feet. So essentially another story, um, didn't quite double the FAR and they reduced the setback. So for these, um, consent, not concessions, but these things that were given to the developer, what was given back to the public in return? Additional public art, um, compliance with 20 of the 32 design guidelines. There are six public bike spaces and there was also 14,000 and change provided for public and undefined public infrastructure improvements. And so go to the next one. I, I won't read in detail each of these, but just so that you can see that there have been some significant height and floor area ratio increases, um, taking to a large degree, um, drawing from the design guidelines to do that. And, um, I thought, I thought the public cafe was kind of a, a nice add there. So you can see what, what was done at this particular property.
It's the size of a micro unit.
The next slide. This developer only asked for tier one, not, not much. So a tiny bump up in the floor area ratio, um, and some bike spaces, which is great. Here we go, we're making a bike-friendly community, which every beach city should be. And as I mentioned, some, some public seating. And then the last example that we have here is also a tier-one community benefits and another, um, larger than micro unit public cafe. Um, and a little bit of money kicked into the, the Smokey Hollow Infrastructure Fund, which could, can continue to collect money. So the, the question is, when you see how much has been drawn from the design guidelines, is there, is that the balance the city looks to achieve or, or might you want to rethink these things? And I think that's the last slide in this, uh, well, uh, this is, I just wanted to show an example of the detail that, um, goes into putting together an assessment of how much the developer is gaining from the additional FAR and giving back to the city. Also, this is, it looks like an eye chart, but we, we can give this to you later if you like. The next slide. These are the design guidelines, the 32 design guidelines. There are just some general topics there that, that, uh, these, these fall under. And the next slide, there is also a list of public realm benefits that the city's looking. A public realm meaning public, um, right-of-way improvements, crosswalks, street trees, uh, parking, all ki-, uh, traffic lights if you need them, that are included in the specific plan with largely undefined funding sources. They could be part of the capital improvements plan, but you've got to find money to pay for them. Next slide. So the, the approach, as I've, I've mentioned, would be changing the standards to, the guidelines to standards. And we've got one slide that shows an example of what the code says today or the specific plan. It, um, up at the top where it's highlighted there, it's kind of mushy about enhancing entry expression in, in these ways. You trade that off by having very specific guidelines showing what the city's looking for. And, and, and it wouldn't be prescriptive, it would give a choice. It might say, you know, five to 10 feet or at least three building, uh, materials, change in color, change in materials. So it would indicate what the city's looking for. Next slide. So with regard to the community benefits, then the choices are keep it as it is. Revise the calculation and contribution standards so that maybe there's more, um, heavier emphasis placed on the public realm improvements. As part of that, it would be revise the existing design guidelines and convert some of those to standards. But, but really talk about what are the priority improvements to the public realm that the city's looking for? There's, there was a menu list, um, but is there something that's critically important? Be it street lighting on El Segundo Boulevard, beautifying Franklin and making it work better, the, what? Those are just some examples. It could be, it could be anything and, and it doesn't have to be prioritized in the specific plan. That's something that you, the city council could do as a separate resolution. But the, the real question is, do you want to start to monkey with the community benefits program? I'll take a breath and let you, dog.
I, I mean, I very much like the direction that I think that you're going in. When you see the four examples, it kind of makes you take a pause about what? And this question does get asked by community members a lot, like what's in it for us? And when you see the height variances and the FAR variances and we maybe have, you know, eight bike spots as a result of it and two trees, that does not feel like the trade-off that we intended. So personally, I'm, would very much support making some of these design guideline standards and then focusing our efforts on the public realm. How we go about allocating that money, I, I don't know, but it feels like walkability is really important, pedestrian flow, and so anything that goes towards improving that as part of the. And so anything that goes towards improving that as part of the, you know, what you're actually paying for to get this variance, I would support.
Yeah, um, you, you used the word squishy and I feel that's exactly what some of these, um, some of these benefits have been. You know, it's like, hey, you know, do this, 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 maybe you'll do this. I mean, the, you're right, it's three bike spaces. That ain't a public benefit. That's something that the, that the building should have anyway. You know, why is that different than a parking spot? I'll go back to the statement that I made early on about, um, the, the concept of complete streets, which again is the idea of really making Smokey Hollow this, this wonderful pedestrian friendly environment. Well, who does that? Who, who, who installs the complete streets? Who does this? This, it falls on the city, right? And so, um, I've, I've asked, every single one of those examples has come before planning commission. And I keep asking the question, when do we start making Smokey Hollow look like all the wonderful renderings that are in the, in the specific plan? And the answer has just been kicking the can down the road. And it's like, come on, guys, are we doing this thing right or not? And so if the, if the right way to get there, as you say, Laura, is to create a fund that does these things, you know, that's probably a great solution, just like the percent for art. The percent for art thing, by the way, is, uh, you know, all new development under, I think over a million bucks has to, has to contribute. But the developer has the option of either contributing to a fu, a, a fund or creating their own public art on their own space. And so I see the value of both of those things. And maybe this could be the same thing. You know, if someone only is willing to, to add two trees and six bike spots, um, you know, maybe they should be kicking into this fund that helps the, the, the greater good for the public realm. But if, if a developer says, hey, you know what? I'm going to do, I'm going to create a park here, a true public park as part of my development. Well, you know, that's, uh, I think that's something that, that you could consider as, as an example.
Let me surmise that the direction is go back and look at this and elevate the public realm as something that should be the rece, should be the purpose of providing, uh, concessions or not concessions, benefits to the developer. The benefits to the public need to be, um, great.
Yeah. You know, the, I'm sorry. Yeah, the checklist was, I remember when Greg put that together and he worked really hard on that. And he was trying to make something concrete and objective out of something that was frankly, pretty subjective. And so I applauded that approach, but I feel like it, we need to take it a step further. We need to really define what that public benefit is going to be.
Sure. I think one of those examples had $14,000 that went to a Smokey Hollow. We know that's not even going to buy you one parking spot. So how are we going to amass the funds that we need to really make it look like the pictures?
Well, and, and I would even, um, encourage a collaboration with even like art, the arts and culture committee. I mean, arts and culture suddenly has this new amount of money coming in with this, uh, with, with the, the public art thing, the percent for art. And when you think about these complete streets, that truly is an artistic cultural experience. And so maybe there are monies that can come together from a couple of different sources.
If I may just add one more thing, Chair Kilduff, at the beginning of this discussion, you did say you were in favor of also looking into elevating some of the design guidelines to standards. So in other words, while we in, increase the emphasis on public realm improvements as part of the community benefits plan, you do not wish to kind of, uh, diminish sort of the, or reduce the priority of building design, right? Private development, building design, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think to Jay's point earlier, you know, this is really some valuable real estate in all of the South Bay and it, we have an opportunity for it to look exceptional, which those four projects that were approved, I think they look exceptional. And so I don't want to not make that the standard. But when you're getting, you know, a two-story height variance and FAR, then that should be expected. And then in addition to that, I think we should have some tangible community benefits.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, and whether everything still has to fit the mid-century vibe, you know, I think is, is up for debate. Um, I, I understand the intent of that, absolutely. So, you know, I'm always, um, unsure how to best define a design when it's such a subjective thing. And I realize, you know, setbacks and heights and things like that and, and bump outs and articulation help do that, but it's still, it's tricky sometimes. So, you know, what is mid-century?
I was just going to ask, I need a, a refresher class on what mid-century define is.
I, I think you probably though have the highest concentration of brick than anywhere in the South Bay. It's wonderful. Okay, good. That's, uh, any other direction staff that we need or is that pretty clear?
No, that's very helpful. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, let's go to the last topic, housing.
We have dinner.
You've got a, a, uh, housing, I think it's back up at HCD, is it right now? The Housing and Community Development Department is, it's taking another, uh, review and look at it. Just as a side note, I want to tell you that it's a very painful process. It's not just El Segundo. I've done about 12 of these in California and, um, it, it's really torturous. But this is a cool neighborhood and those people who thought they were putting in caretaker units that probably are more than caretaker units have, have thought, what a, what a neat place to live and work. But this is also a really cool industrial district and it, it's attracting makers and really innovative and interesting, um, businesses and, but, but, you know, that, that pay, uh, business taxes and accrue other benefits to the city as well. The housing element has two sites that are adjacent to the specific plan and one site in the specific plan. And they are, um, for the, the Wiley Park site, which is within, is designated for housing via the overlay up to 85 units per acre. And then the other two sites are in the R3 zone. It's the R3 overlay and you don't have any R3 zoning in, in Smokey Hollow. So that would not be something that would apply unless the R3 zone were, um, put into the Smokey Hollow, a, a specific plan area. And so the first question is, is this an appropriate location for housing? Given that the housing element has been able to find adequate sites citywide to accommodate the regional housing needs allocation for the next eight years. And I, I, I didn't study up on that, but I don't know if Smokey Hollow was, was discussed as, as part of that or if it was said, nope, it's a funky district, it's an industrial district. That's all, let's, yeah, that's there.
And that's assuming the element will be approved, right? Is that kind of where we're at?
So the, the quest, first question, should it be allowed? Second, if it were, uh, would it be restricted by geographic area? What would it look like? Would it be something lower intensity? I think the reason you've got these intensities that are, are indicated here is because you have a high regional housing needs allocation and there was a need to bump up density in some places and bump it up pretty high. And so that's why you're, you're seeing those numbers. But if it were in Smokey Hollow, would you want something that has a scale similar to what the district allows for non-residential uses? So those are tough questions. And I want to preface this by saying that, um, that, that's a tough issue to talk about thoroughly tonight, in particular because we only have two, two people in the audience? Yep, they're still here. And it's, it's an important, in, in my mind, it's an important citywide issue for discussion. Um, and, um, I, I think staff would feel that that's something that would also require, um, much more environmental analysis than just some of the simple changes that we've talked about this evening. So I hope I didn't editorialize too much, Michael and Eduardo and Paul.
I can just add a little bit of context. I think you're, you're explaining it perfectly. I, I think tonight we really just want to know what type of appetite there is because if we do go down this road, it's a rather robust, different conversation that we may opt to take separately from this whole process because we don't want to usurp the rest of the work that needs to be done that we just went through. Cause we have, we have financial limitations currently. Uh, we could go back and ask for more, but we're trying to live within the means. But I think what we do need to know is if there's appetite, um, the extent of that appetite and then we can then internally strategize how we, how we tackle that, either collectively or bifurcate it, you know, or, or come back at another time or, or just how we, how we strategize addressing it, um, from a housing standpoint in Smokey Hollow.
Discussion slide.
That's all that we have. I'm going to apologize because I feel like you're being drawn into a little bit of a, a family, you know, one of those dinner table discussions that can go in any direction.
I told you it's a charming town that I'm happy to, to be in.
Chair, just to remind you, the last time we introduced a sort of sensitive topic, we decided to close Main Street entirely. So I don't know where this is going to go tonight, but, uh, just want to warn you.
Housing everywhere, okay. I will go last and I will let both of you start with any comments.
I personally think the, the, the residential, if there is residential in Smokey Hollow, what works best is live work. I feel like that's the right character. That was kind of the wink, wink, uh, underpinnings of the caretaker unit. And, you know, I, I, I don't want to get anybody in trouble on this, but it was like, okay, we're kind of, we, we were told by staff, don't bring up housing, I'm sorry, back in 2018. Not all of you were here, some of us were here. We had this very discussion and it was basically shut down. It's like, let's get this specific plan done. We'll deal with housing when the element comes up. Um, and so again, it keeps getting kicked down the road. And so, um, there's probably a point of, a tipping point of either this is dead or we're going to have a real discussion about it. And then of course, that's going to include city council or probably a referendum. I don't know. But, um, you know, I thi, I think live work is certainly appropriate. My guess is there's a boatload of people live and working there right now, you know, that, that are just off the books. And it makes sense because, you know, a, a, a woman has a photography studio and she's got a little loft up top and, you know, she's working there all the time. And, you know, that, that is a tremendous opportunity for live work. I think that's a really nice situation. I know lots of cre, you know, we think about these, these creative incubators. These guys are working all night, you know, they need a place to hang out because they're burning the midnight oil, you know? Having live work is, uh, is, is kind of a nice setup. And so I feel like that's a very different, um, view of, of residential than putting in a bunch of multifamily or, you know, single families or something like that. So live work would be my vote if we were to do this.
Yeah, I think that's a really good way to, to put it, Jay. Having kind of, starting out with live work as we expand kind of the, the housing into this area because we want it to have some sort of kind of cohesiveness as it, as it evolves. We don't, I don't think that we want to start, you know, by, you know, Illinois Street where the, the, the city facility is. I don't think we want housing all the way that far. Maybe if we can, I guess, ease into it by being closer to the community so that the new residents that are in that area aren't completely disconnected to the rest of the community. And I'm talking about, you know, the, the, um, the, the west side of, of the, uh, you know, the square there. So, but yeah, I think the live work is probably the best way to go. It is, and if we can keep them part of the community, have it closer to where the residential areas are first, instead of going, I guess, east, sou- southeast, that would be my preference.
Yeah, I mean, I wholeheartedly agree. I think the housing element in this discussion are in some ways two separate things. The housing element is to, in many ways, address state mandates and arena numbers. And to me, Smokey Hollow is about increasing livability in the city. Um, I think live work would be a great solution for that. Also, if we want kind of that comprehensive or cohesive feel, actually having residents there to some degree helps stimulate that walkability and brings in additional businesses. So completely agree. The only other thing I would add or ask both of you about for discussion is the part of Smokey Hollow that is north of, right? North of Grand. So Holly, Kansas Park around there. Just because this has, it's come up, right? I mean, it was proposed as a large-scale office project and I don't know where that stands in the process, but that was met with, was considerable resistance from the community. Previously, I think that site was zoned medium density residential. Um, there are some environmental considerations there. But for me personally, I feel like it wants to go back to that. It's more consistent with the zoning around what's there. Uh, so that would be for the balance of Smokey Hollow, absolutely. I would just stick to a live work concept, but for that portion, I don't know. I think we need to look at that site specifically.
Yeah, and that feels kind of disconnected from Smokey Hollow a little bit anyway. So because it's on the other side of Grand. But I, I agree with that. I think that would be, uh, if I could remediate that.
Yeah, I agree. I think the residents there, they've, you know, been very involved with the planning commission and, you know, they, they, thank you for bringing them, that, that area up, Michelle. I think it's important consideration.
I don't know, maybe it's not as long or about of a conversation.
I think that's helpful for our internal conversation. I think that's very helpful.
Yeah, the direction we need to, to head, okay. I think that's it.
And, and then I guess caretakers kind of take on a different meaning if live work were a thing, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think the point is if, if that wink, wink was to, to accomplish something else, let's just do the something else and do it right instead of some underhanded way of making something happen, which is now if it's happening, it's happening under the radar because we don't have any legal live work, I'm sorry, uh, caretaker units. So let's just make it happen the right way. And to the same point of the, the gyms, the gyms are there. They've been there. They were there when the specific plan was developed. And it, part of the methodology was let's provide a path for them. None of them have gone down that path because it's too hard. So let's just make a path that's not so hard so we can do it the right way. And so I think to that, that point, you know, the, the effort can be spent just make, doing it the right way for the live work units. If that's what the intention was in 2018 or 19.
Yeah, I think it was.
I think that's it, Paul. Can you advance just so I can make sure that we didn't have any lingering topics? Uh, next steps. I think we've gotten really great direction from you on all three of the, what we call the substantive topics that we put before, forward to you. The, the options are, as I indicated at the beginning, is should we proceed to the, through the hearing process with just some minor revisions? Make the minor revisions, the, the cleanup stuff plus community benefits? Or maybe do we want to take any of these topics off calendar and, and discuss them more? I'm almost thinking it's probably not a commission discussion, but a planning staff discussion based on the feedback that we got tonight as to which, which option.
Yeah, I think this is helpful for the commission to understand the path that we're, we're sort of navigating down is the purpose of tonight was to discuss and, and get direction on all the items that we did tonight. We're, we're trying to live in, within our means from a budget perspective. And so now our task is to try to extrapolate the amount of effort that needs to go into making tonight's discussion a reality and strategize how we can do that within our means, uh, which could mean several things. Maybe we can do it all within what we anticipated, um, from a budget perspective. Maybe it means knocking out and, and identifying a scope to get us through a phase one and come back to do a phase two, uh, on a subsequent fiscal year. Or, you know, we need to strategize from that perspective in order to, uh, realize, uh, the, the outcome from tonight's discussion. And so, uh, from a timing perspective, I can't recall from a schedule when we were anticipating coming back.
I don't recall off the top of my head.
But what we can do is when, when, once we have these discussions, we can provide the commission with an update. But we're not talking about next year. And we're, this is the, you know, the, the train is moving, the, the foot's on the gas pedal and we're really trying to advance this in the next several months and this, this calendar year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice work.
Okay, so we, uh, we're moving on. Report from Community Development Director.
No report tonight unless, uh, Eduardo or Planning Manager has any updates.
Yeah, I just, I just want to, um, um, you know, uh, alert you to, in your packet, uh, we provided you kind of a planning commission forecast. Uh, there is a little footnote that does say that, uh, the agenda may very well expand and contract. And, um, of course it was put together on the fifth and, and, and just to let you know, uh, it's already moving.
Understood.
So, um, so yeah, we do anticipate bringing, um, a, a, a general overall higher, high, you know, high level, um, uh, cleanup ordinance before you. It's, it's pretty lengthy, um, but, uh, we're kind of work, working out the strategy, but, uh, we're, we're kind of thinking, you know, it may, you know, be a couple. you know, it may, you know, be a couple meetings, depending on, you know, the workload on that night and, you know, the commission's tolerance to level of us and of the topics that are before you. So, but I just want to alert you that, at least, the first one we're actually now targeting, instead of January twenty-sixth, the first one I think we'll be targeting will be the February ninth to start that kind of general cleanup process or ordinance. It's very comprehensive. It includes all three, you know, both non-residential and residential, and some of them are pretty simple. But, yeah, I just wanted to alert you to that. The second thing, or second item, I just wanted to...Trey, I did email you all, all the commissioners last month regarding the Planning Commissioners Academy, which is coming up in March, so just wanted to remind you, and, you know, if you...if there is some interest in attending, you know, let me know. If it got trapped in your junk box, let me know, and I'll forward it on to everyone again, so...
Thank you. Thanks, Eduardo. Anything from the city attorney's office?
Nothing at this time, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're just a planning commissioner comments. Anything to add?
First, I want to thank the staff for ushering the...because we talked about the housing element, for pushing that through and working with the states, doing that. I've heard and seen articles about horror stories for cities that have not been complying with that, so thank you for you guys' efforts, and congratulations to both of you on your, I guess, election to the award, the appointments? Yeah, I don't know what the right word is.
Thank you.
Yeah, but congratulations. I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you guys, and it seems like we have a vacancy at this point.
Yes, you won't be the newest member anymore.
And I'm telling Brenda you're in her seat.
So, that's it for me. Thank you.
I just have a question on behalf of a neighbor of mine. At the December eighth meeting, when there was a couple projects on Oak Avenue, I would have had to recuse myself anyway, because that's the street I live on. One of the neighbors who lived across the street was told that they could find plans of a house that was being built on the city's website, and I ran into the neighbor the other day, and he said, I have no idea where to find that on the website. And I didn't go looking for him, but I just thought I'd bring it up in a public forum and say, is there...or ask, is there an easy way to point the public to these public records that is easier for them to find?
Yeah, it really depends on what the ask is. So, for example, that one on Oak, the planning commission packet does have the plans in there, so you could direct him to, or your neighbor to, to that particular planning commission agenda and packet, and it has the same information as provided to you, and it is available to the public, and we do make it a point, as you know, to include the plans that discuss a particular project. Now, whether he's looking for the actual plans, the actual construction building plan, that's a different story.
That's the sense I got. I mean, I didn't...I think he had the actual packet, but, you know, I can verify that with him.
Because if that's the case, that we don't have online until the permit is issued and construction is complete, then we go through a process to then memorialize that, and eventually it does get put online. But that being stated, that doesn't mean that your neighbor could...or anyone, really, couldn't come to City Hall and request to see it. You know, we typically have it digitally already. We can't make it just available and send it to anyone, because it is copyrighted material, but they would have the ability to at least come to City Hall, check with our building staff, and we could at least show them at the counter, and we can go over the plans with them.
Good, okay. I'll pass that along, and I'm sure he's watching tonight, so, hi, Stephen.
Wait until the end.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, thank you, thank you all for guiding me through my first meeting, so I appreciate it, and really appreciated the Smoky Hollow conversation. I know we've been talking about it and waiting for it for a while, so did not disappoint. Appreciate all of your efforts and that. I think with that, we are adjourned.
Nice gavel. Nice.